Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. We are now in the Public Safety Committee. This is the hearing for eighteen dash zero zero nine two R. Monthly City Council Council Stat with the Police Department. I am Councilman Brandon Scott, Chair to the Committee. I am joined tonight by my left by Councilman Eric Costello, not Councilman Ryan Dorstie, who's normally sitting to my left. Councilman Eric Costello, member of the Committee from the eleventh District. To his left, Councilman Leon Pinkett, from the Seventh District, Member of the Committee. To his left, Councilman Christopher Burnett, from the Eighth District, Member of the Committee. And we are also joined to my right by Councilwoman Shannon Snead, from the Thirteenth District, Member of the Committee, and Councilman Zee Cohen, from the First District, Member of the Committee. We are also joined by Richard Crumbridge, who is the Staff to the Committee, Mister Jeff Amaro, representing Mayor Pugh. Colonel Conway, I think this portion of the meeting will be your show, sir. So, we have a few things that we want to talk about. Well, let's just first start in saying where we are year-to-date versus last year, sir, please?
So, if you take a look at homicides, this year, we're looking at twenty-eight versus twenty-six. We have fifty shootings versus thirty-eight. We have robbery. We have four hundred and fifty-six-
Colonel, stop for one second. So, is this through Saturday or through today?
Yeah, this is through Saturday, not through today.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. If you want me to get you to today-
Yeah, let's just do today for the top-level ones, yes, sir.
So, it's going to be twenty-eight versus twenty-seven. That would equate to three point seven percent. Fifty-six versus forty-one in non-fatal shootings. That would equate to thirty-six point six percent. Robbery totals, four hundred and fifty-five versus five hundred and thirty-one. So, we're down fourteen percent in robbery. Aggravated assault is four-one versus three ninety-nine. We're up one percent. Burglary is doing extremely well. Four hundred and fifty-five versus five hundred and eighty-nine. They're down twenty-three percent. Larceny, twelve eighty-seven versus twelve oh-four. Auto theft, three hundred and sixty-two versus four eighty-three. We're down twenty-five percent in auto theft. In arson, we had six versus fourteen. We're down fifty-seven percent. Total violent crime, we're down ten percent. That's eight ninety-five versus nine ninety-four.
Thank you. Chief Gillis, if you could go back to the original presentation for a second, please. And Colonel, before we do our normal way of going by district, I want you to walk us through these slides that we have here that does the comparison versus where we are now versus the years before, and most notably, twenty-fourteen. Bear with us as we have some technical changes here. Chief Gillis will not be a part of the severeization plane. Thank you. Yeah, Colonel, I think that you know that while this council appreciates that we had a reduction in homicides last year versus the year before, you know that we want us to hold ourselves to higher standards. We know that last year versus the year previous to that, the year previous to that was the most violent year in the history of Baltimore. And we don't hold ourselves accountable at our worst, but at our best. So, that's why we ask you guys to have this presentation that looks at violent crime over time. For us, so that my colleagues, myself, and the members of the city can see, people of the city can see where we were and where we are, and most importantly, where we need to go, what we have, we need to strive to do. So, if you could walk us through the next few slides, and then we will go district by district.
So, if you, okay. So, just to, you want me to explain this slide here?
Yes, sir.
So, if you take a look at patrol staffing levels versus violence, if you look at two thousand, I believe it starts in January two thousand and fourteen, you will also see that our patrol staffing levels are at its highest over that time period. As you can see, crime actually went up as we lost individuals in the Police Department, which we've talked about pretty much all night tonight. And I would say that, you know, the focus, of course, is recruitment because we see just by the graph that if we have more police officers, crime is actually lower.
So, Colonel, can I stop you there for one second? Just because while I agree with you, you know, I agree wholeheartedly that we have to have better staffing models for the Police Department. Actually, Chief Gillis, if you can go back to Slide seventeen, I think that what we have to do is also, again, as I said earlier, talk about the efficiencies that we can do and how we can have an actual plan and strategy in place and what that can do for us. Because I want to point out a few things. While I agree with what you're saying about the dire need for recruitment. So, when you look at, for example, in twenty-ten, according to this, we hired a hundred and seventy-one folks and we lost two hundred and forty-nine. The next year following that is twenty-eleven, and that's the lowest year on record for Baltimore in homicides. And then, when you look at twenty-fourteen, or twenty-thirteen, we hired a hundred and fifty-one individuals and we lost two hundred and sixty-five. Twenty-fourteen is the second lowest year. So, I think that while it does equate to the amount of people that we have and people that we have working, I think it's important for us to also dig down in on having an actual strategy, having metrics, having accountability, and being, having an efficiently-operated Police Department as well. Because when we look at those numbers on that one slide, and you look at them in this one, in comparison to those years in homicides that we had there, I think that you can see a difference. For example, in, let's just say, two thousand and three, we hired two hundred and eleven officers and we lost two hundred and eight. But we know that crime was significantly higher in two thousand and three than it was in twenty-eleven or in twenty-fourteen. So, we can go back to the other slides now, Chief Gillis. Yes, Slide fifty-five, please. I just want the Colonel to walk us through these remaining slides really quickly before we go to-
So, Drew, since you produced these slides, why don't you come on up? Because you can see them.
Yeah.
I have a problem with that.
They are very colorful.
Hi, everyone. Drew Vaught with the BPD. So, what this is, is just a monthly breakdown of homicides going back from the first of the year for twenty-fourteen, transitioning all the way to January of two thousand and nineteen.
And thank you. And Mr. Director Vaught, next month, can we have this in number form only? I think I saw the Colonel's eyes glaze over with all the colors just now.
Yeah, so I think moving forward, what I can do, just kind of for visual purposes-
Yeah, just simple numbers. Just every month and say what the totals were every month to break down. So, we can clearly see that we were at a much better place in twenty-fourteen and that we have a lot of work, we have a lot of work to do. But I think for, not just for visual purposes, for the intake of information for not just us, but the citizens who will be watching this on TV and on YouTube, it'll be easier for people to take in with actual numbers versus the bar graphs.
Absolutely.
Go to the next slide, Chief.
So, again, so again, this breaks down homicides on a monthly basis, beginning in the first of January of twenty, two thousand and fourteen, and goes all the way to January thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen. But this is just broken down by each of the respective districts.
And the same thing, if we could have this, and actually, that will be a follow-up for Chief Gillis and for you, Director Vaught, to have this sent to us by the end of the week with just the numbers so that we can analyze that information.
Absolutely.
Next one.
Transitioning from homicides, same exact breakdown for shootings. We looked at it citywide on a monthly basis, beginning in twenty-fourteen and transitioning all the way to thirty-first of January for two thousand and nineteen. And it's going to be the consistent trend for each of the graphs moving forward. We looked at homicide shootings, total robberies, aggravated assaults and burglaries. And I broke it down citywide and then broke it down by each of the respective districts for all of the subsequent graphs as well.
Okay, thank you. Chief, we can go to the Exim, please. We'll come back to the other slides in a minute. Colonel, if you want to start us to walk us through district by district, please. Or if you want to go over the, well, the citywide numbers you've went over already. If you want to go district by district, we will start with the Central this time. We started at the bottom the last time.
I'm going to let Colonel Jones step up and talk about those numbers.
And Colonel, because you may have, may not have seen these in the past, if you can just basically go through each of the districts in your area, the councilperson and myself and others who represent that area will ask you questions in particular about them. But we like to focus in on homicides, non-fatal shootings, robberies, and burglaries are mostly what we speak about.
Yes, sir. So, for the Central District, the homicides two thousand and nineteen compared to two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen had one homicide as compared to four. That is a reduction in seventy-five percent. For non-fatal shootings, two thousand and nineteen, we currently had three non-fatal shootings versus two. In reference to your robberies, robberies as a whole, for two thousand and nineteen, we were at sixty-two incidents. In two thousand and eighteen, we were at fifty-nine plus five incidents. For burglary, we are at fifty-three incidents in two thousand and nineteen versus thirty-nine in two thousand and eighteen, up thirty-six incidents. For total Part One crime for the Central District, there was a hundred and eight incidents versus a hundred and nineteen in two thousand and eighteen for a reduction of nine percent. Total property crime, two hundred and fifty-five in two thousand and nineteen versus two hundred in two thousand and eighteen. I'm sorry, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and nineteen was two hundred and fifty-five versus two hundred, increase of twenty-eight percent. And total Part One crime for two thousand and nineteen was three hundred and sixty-three incidents versus three hundred and nineteen incidents, an increase of fourteen percent for the Central District.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For, how's the deployment in McCall Homes?
So, the McCall Homes deployment is going well. So, Major Gaines and Captain Featherstone have a dedicated contingent for the homes. It includes a post officer who is mandated to walk foot inside of the homes. Anyone who knows the dynamics of the homes, it is very tricky. It has a lot of subdivisions and breakaways that you cannot get through with a vehicle. So, it forces you and mandates the officers to get out the car and to get engaged. So, they have been doing that. That coupled with some strategic areas within the district, they, along with the other two areas in the district, have identified priority zones. Those priority zones have dedicated officers within those zones that cannot leave that designated area, which gives that added increase of omnipresence and deployment capability. So, between the homes, Lexington Market down there on Howard Street and Lombard, I mean, and Lombard, and then as well as the Bricks, and then Northern Linden, we've been prioritizing these areas within the Central District to be optimal in reference to what our deployment is, not only on the enforcement side for engagement, but also in the community aspect of getting out there, getting involved, being very visible along that Pennsylvania Avenue corridor with those officers that are stationed inside of the Avenue Market.
Back when you were the major in the Central, eons ago, I remember we had a conversation about removing parking from both sides of Pennsylvania Avenue from like the fifteen to eighteen-hundred blocks.
Yes.
Is there any utility in revisiting that discussion to assist your officers?
I think it was a viable plan. I think we need to revisit it. But I also know that there were some concerns from the business community of how that would affect them in reference to not having the patrons be able to park in that block to patronize their businesses. So, I think anything is worth looking back in and revisiting. But I think sitting down at the table, weighing all of the options, I think, you know, we can definitely revisit it again.
So, would it be helpful if I reach out to Parking Authority tonight to Pete Little and ask him if he can do some traffic counts on the side streets on that stretch? To the best of my knowledge, every time I'm up there in the daytime, there seems to be ample parking available. So, if we can push some of that residential, or we push some of that business district parking out to the residential side streets, we're going to increase foot traffic there, which is a good thing where the crimes getting pushed out, and then create some visibility for your team.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll shoot an email out tonight. I'll copy you and ask Pete how soon he can do some traffic count studies. And last question for the Central, how are things going with the lead program around Lexington Market?
So, the lead program, of course, has had much success and has been, had much notoriety. We are looking at trying to duplicate that in other districts. Of course, we're not to that point yet, but it is having much success as being a pre-diversion program, dealing with those individuals so that we are less harm, having a less harmful impact on arresting individuals who need our assistance through resources. So, it's still having much success. But what we have done is, in specific, in certain cases, we've opened it up to other districts who can refer people to us. And if they're viable, then the lead program is also looking at pulling in other individuals. So, it's having a limited impact in some other districts, but it's still having a strong impact.
One last quick one, Mr. Chair, if I may. The Medmark Methadone Treatment Facility, they have one on the eight-hundred block in North Calvert in Mount Vernon. They also have one, this is a private facility. It's currently housed on the campus at UMMC Midtown and is getting ready to move into Seton Hill. Do you know off the top of your head if there's been any issues with either of those two facilities or their patients?
Nothing has come to my attention, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colonel, the State, stay on the Central for a moment here. Something that's very concerning to me is that year-to-date, they have a thirty-four percent increase in street robberies. Can we talk about that? And I know the Colonel will have the patterns and what we're seeing as this being driven by juvenile increased street robberies. Is this a team of folks? Is there a specific area in the Central that they're happening in so that we can get that information out to people?
Sure. So, normally, the Central District, historically, on one-eleven post has always driven the crime for robberies. One-eleven post is, of course, the downtown area. Being that it's that downtown transit hub, we have a lot of individuals who know this is a good area to prey on our victims. We have individuals either who are enjoying our lovely city or are going to and coming from work. And what happens is, normally, our predatory individuals are transitory. They're not really individuals who live in the Central District. They're coming from outside districts. And because it is that transit hub, we do find it a little difficult sometimes to identify our normal persons of interest and our problems as far as how do we deploy for. But we've been very robust in dealing with the downtown area, working with the schools, police, as well as the Dean of Discipline at certain schools in reference to having some of those juvenile issues. What we've seen is trying to get ahead of those problematic juvenile issues. Two weeks before the beginning of school, two weeks prior to the end of school, any major holidays that we know about and dismissals, we're pushing that information out to the Inner Harbor Unit and our other deployment resources to address those early ingress and egress problems that we're having in reference to the schools. The Central District has had its share of problematic robberies along, you know, those Bolton Hill, up in Res Hill. So, those problematic areas that are known historic for the Central District, we have been deploying for them. We've created a robbery team that we have used to kind of address those issues. And we've had some success. But unfortunately, we have had a number of the citywide patterns that have touched, other districts have also touched the Central.
Thank you. And then, my next thing is that they're up one non-fatal shooting, but I think that that's important. But I also want to talk about they have a thirty-six percent increase in burglaries in the Central District. Can you tell me if there are specific patterns that you're seeing there, specific neighborhoods that my colleagues can get information out to? Is it daytime burglaries, nighttime burglaries? What are you seeing?
So, for the burglaries for the Central District, historically, it has been during the early morning hours, not early morning hours, but during the, what we would call the baker shift, when individuals are gone home, are gone to work. So, we're looking at those patterns right now. The Charles, the Charles Avenue, Charles Street corridor has been historically one of those problematic areas for us, as well as the Reservoir Hill. We've seen some increase in burglaries around there. As far as specific patterns right now, other than that, I would have to get back with you specifically for that, sir.
So, a question for that, and this leads to a citywide question as well. So, if we've had fifty-three burglaries in the Central District alone, that's a big increase for them. Can you tell me, or maybe this is a question for Chief Odell, because these people are underneath him, how many of these cases have we actually fingerprinted? And if your officers are seeing, because I've been hearing from officers on the street that they call for crime lab for burglaries and they never show up, or they show up late, or they show up, you know, hours, hours after, have you had a problem with that? And have we been able to get crime lab out to get fingerprinting as much as possible for the burglaries?
So, I do know, not to speak for Chief Odell, I do know that we're pushing to our office the importance of having those fingerprint hits done because we can go back. Because that's how the burglaries are going to be resolved. What I will tell you is that individuals, because of a delay one way or the other, either because of rumor of a delay or because they're facing it themselves, we have had a reduction in individuals not requesting to have a crime lab. Sometimes, we also, we try to get beyond the idea of individuals not wanting to have their property damaged by having the ink on their property. So, sometimes, they just don't want the inconvenience of having crime lab come out with the dust kit and then, you know, destroy their property even further. So, we're trying to battle that, but we're trying to give them that, look, this is how we're going to combat this through this fingerprint hits. So, we're working towards that, sir.
Chief, you want to, do you want to talk, can you tell, Chief Odell, do you know, I don't expect you to know this off the top of your head, but you may, how many actual crime lab technicians you have? And how many you have working, let's say, per year?
Thirty-six total on the street. And it's roughly divided up nine per squad.
Nine per squad?
Four squads.
And do you know how many, and this is something that you guys can get back to us, but we'll be interested in seeing, I want to know how many actual times you guys have went out and done fingerprints for burglaries year-to-date, and how many times you were requested? Because I think that's information, because we're hearing that from not just citizens, but from patrol officers about delay with crime lab. And I know that we've, a few years ago, this is an increase in technicians for you, or is this steady at this point?
Steady at this point. It was increased under, it was increased-
Commissioner Davis?
Under, yes. I don't know now, like three years ago, maybe?
So, if you could, by the end of the week, Mr. Gillis, make sure that we receive this information. The amount of burglary calls that the crime lab has been called out for?
Yeah, we track almost every data point you can imagine.
By district and how many times they've actually been able to do prints. I think that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, our total response, we range anywhere, depending on the year, total request for service between twelve thousand and sixteen thousand calls a year for that. It's about a three, it's crazy. It's about a three hundred and fifty percent above the seventy-fifth percentile, the national median of a hundred laboratories on average. It's exceptional.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any other questions for the Central District, Councilman Pinkett?
No, I'm good.
You're good? Southeast District is up next.
Good evening, everyone. Lieutenant Colonel Hatchett of Area Two. Southeast District currently, year-to-date, we have four homicides. That's up three. We have three non-fatal shootings, which is up one. For our robberies, we're down actually eighteen percent overall. For our burglars, we're down six percent overall. And for a total Part One crime, we're actually even of our numbers from last year.
Thank you. I'll start, then I'll go to my colleague, Councilman Cohen. Can we, let's talk about the homicides, Colonel, and talk about where they are. I know we've had four of them, where they are. And then, actually, while we're doing that, Chief Gillis, if you can bring up that other map around the homicides and the calls for service, can we just go through the basic information about the four homicides?
So, the basic information is we have the one homicide down in-
So, I just want to add that we cannot talk about open cases.
Oh, yeah, no, just where they are. Like, yeah, no, yeah, no, yeah, no pertinent information.
Right. So, we have the one down on Broadway that we know has a warrant, and the guy was arrested on that warrant. We had the domestic out in Hollibird. The warrant is written for that guy as well. We had the, we had the Fleet Street, I'm sorry, yes, we had twenty-three-hundred Fleet Street and four hundred North Curly. Those are homicides. It appears that none of these are connected to one another. And that's pretty much where we are with those particular homicides.
And the shootings?
Oh, shootings, I'm sorry. Shootings, it's, we have a back-and-forth issue in the area of the twenty-three-hundred, I'm sorry, twenty-nine-hundred of McGalgery, which we have put deployments in place to, along with a, we have the Winnebago there as well, which is man twenty-four hours a day. So, that is a lot of our driving crime for that area over in the Southeast and Eastern District. We have put together a plan for that area where both Eastern and Southeast District will tackle this collectively as one. We have identified our MSI, which is our Monument Street Initiative, to bump all the way over to Fayette Street. So, we have an active plan that I believe is going to pay dividends in the end. And since we have put this in place, I don't want to say it, but we haven't had any incidents since we've put this in place. The other, the other one is sixty-six-hundred Bushy. No connectivity in that one. Three hundred North High, I thought, no connectivity in that one. And thirty-six-hundred East Lombard is still in that same geography there. And then, we have thirty-three-hundred McGalgery, which is again in that same geography. And one thing I can tell you is that the geography alone, we know there's something going on down there. We believe it's a beef between crews down there, and we are actively engaging those suspects.
Yeah, thirty-six-hundred Lombard, I think that this is something that we've talked to the major about too. We have some activity along there, and then along Crescent Street, right at Lombard as well, that we think is spilling over there. And we, you guys didn't provide it today. I thought it was on the map, but it isn't. But just remember for next month, we want to, when we have the last four homicides, we want to see the calls for service around those incidents in the weeks preceding too. So, just remember through that for the follow-up. Can we talk about for a second, this is something that's a pain for me. But when we look at Southeast, again, it is larceny from auto. I know this is something that we talk about consistently. It's an issue not just there, but across the city. And they have a forty-five percent increase versus last year in larceny from auto, it's a hundred and thirty-nine to ninety-six. Can you tell me, Colonel, exactly where they're happening so that myself and my colleagues who represent the Southeast District can get information out to people about how to be, not become the victim of a larceny from auto?
Yes, and my esteemed colleague was a victim of a larceny from auto as well, Colonel. So, what we have been doing in that is actually, we have been deploying units from our office, the COP's office, doing those hours that we believe, or that we know the larcenies are actually happening. So, what we have tasked the officers to do is actually get out the car and actually walk some blocks. And what we're doing is, you may come out and you look like you have a ticket on your car. What it actually is, a pamphlet that we made up to say, hey, you know, you left a laptop in your car, but it looks like a ticket to tell you how to be safe. It's something that we just started again since I've taken over that area, and it is working. But one thing, what I am thinking about tasking my officers to do, but it may affect the public, is when they find that laptop in the car or that person in the backseat that we actually see, we're actually going to run a tag number, find out where the person, and knock on their door. It might be a two o'clock knock. But I'd rather wake you up and tell you, hey, you don't want to be a victim at this time, as opposed to you coming out and losing your five thousand dollar computer. So, it's an effort that we're going to do in that area. I just really want to run it past my upper command to see if we are legitimate in doing it and being transparent. So, that's what we're going to do to tackle that problem.
Thank you. Because I think that things like that, so most of these are happening on what shift? Do you, can you tell me that information, which shift are they happening on?
So, it's happening along the overnight hours on our midnight shift. So, and that's where I believe we have our lower call volume. So, we will be able to have the officers actually get out the car and put these, look like tickets, it says, it says ticket on it. But once you read it, you realize that this is a pamphlet. And we'll be able to do that block. And I'm not saying we're going to do it block by block, but we'll be able to hit the district throughout the night.
And where in the district are they at? Is this all over? Are they concentrated? Is it concentrated? Because I think that would help us-
It's pretty much all over. It's not one area. We have arrested a few- We have arrested a few individuals that we know have been recidivists for this as well. But it's just, really, it's a crime of opportunity. People are going down pulling car door handles, just in the area, walking home from wherever they're coming from, and they're getting us like that.
And last question on that, I know we used to have these dummy cars that we were set up to do things like that, these. Have we thought about using those again?
So I have thought about that, and I don't think logistically, and it comes with some type of insurance with it, where, where we, we kind of backed off of it. But that's something that I would like to explore a little further, even if we just place a car there and we watch it, you know, one hundred percent without them knowing, you know, being alerted to us. I think we'll be able to do that, but that's something that I do want to explore, and I will get back to you with that as well.
Councilman, I just wanted to let you know that my police car was broken into, so it wasn't my personal car. So that was a dummy car, if you will, in the block, and they still broke into it. So I just want to let you know that sometimes those individuals really don't care.
Yes, sir, Colonel. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a couple of issues in Southeast. So pattern robberies, seems like there's a relatively small amount of crews that have been coming through and either in a stolen vehicle or just on the street, essentially jumping out, robbing people. Keeps, it seemingly keeps happening, and I know this has been a citywide issue. And I know that there was relatively recently a few arrests made. But it remains a deeply disturbing trend, even though the report is that the robbery numbers are down. If you were to ask my neighbors, they would not think so. So what are we doing on that? And then my second question, particularly our Hispanic population, Greettown, Highland Town, Upper Fells Point. There was a little while there where the robberies and the assaults and the muggings were just completely out of control. And one of my concerns there is some of it was under-reported and unreported. I heard from several individuals that they had called police, and police took forty-five minutes to show up on the scene. Sometimes the victim was treated as the perpetrator. Just some very, very deep concerns within that community at a time when already there's a lot of anxiety because of our national immigration policies. So that's a major concern for me, is our Hispanic community in Southeast Baltimore and the continued victimization that they're facing. And then the third thing I want to say is I'm glad to hear that you have this new policy about having the officers get out of the cars and engage and tell folks to, you know, hide their laptop. However, I continue to see, and I continue to hear from my constituents, too much of officers sitting in cars on their cell phone, on the, you know, doing something that is not walking around in the neighborhood policing. And it remains a concern. Too often, especially in some of our hotter areas where we've had a pattern of robberies, I'm seeing police officers in the cars, and it's something that we raise again and again and again and again. So just the need for officers to be out of the vehicle in the neighborhood, walking, patrolling, engaging, I just think is absolutely critical.
Right. So the first question was what we've done for the robberies. So we've made significant arrests in that area of Highland Town and those, Ari Patterson Park and stuff like that. We made some significant arrests, significant arrests over there. And we have seen that our robberies have curtailed. We believe and we know it is a robbery crew, like you actually said. We know who they are. We have arrested, without getting into, into the details of, of the case, we have arrested them in recent days. And since then, we have really seen a decline in our robberies. We know we got the right perpetrators of these robberies, of these robbers, but we know that there's one more crew out there that we're actively going after, and we share the same patterns with Baltimore County. We're working with Baltimore County and our federal partners in reference to, to this crew. I am confident that we will be able to take these, these individuals off the street. It's just a really, really long tedious process. And the way they're operating is they have masks on and they are always gloved up. So our fingerprints are not good, and a lot of our facial recognition. But from, from, from technology that we're using, we'll be, we've been able to track a lot of the things that's going on. So with that being said, I do believe in, in upcoming weeks, we'll see an even further decline in our robberies in the Southeast District to go along with the awesome efforts that we have already done. I mean, your second question was?
The Hispanic population in particular, that's seen increasing victimization and not always the greatest response.
Right. So what we've noticed with the Hispanic population is that they don't want to seek the help of, of police because some of them may not be in, in the country legitimately. So what's happened is they believe that we're going to go after them. But we have a Hispanic liaison, as you know, in the Southeast District, and we're pushing to him to push to them. We don't care about your immigration status. We want to know exactly what happened to you, because without the information that is shared, we, it's not possible for us to actually combat the crimes with that. So that's been our push. That's been my push when I go to roll calls and talk to the individuals as well, to tell them, hey, we're not here to, to ask you about immigration status, and let them know that we're here to help. At the end of the day, we actually here as, as, as an ally to them. So that's been the push. That's going to be, continue the push. We actually came up with a pamphlet. I'm not sure if you saw the pamphlet that we came up recently, that was written in Spanish and in English. I think we're going to do another language as well. I'm not sure what that language is currently. But we're actually doing, doing that, and we're going to task, we're not going to, we're tasking our officers, we're getting out the car and engaging the Hispanic population, and just giving them the piece of paper to let them know that, hey, we're not here for that. Now, some instances, what we've seen in reference to them being victimized twice, we've seen that whenever we come in contact with an individual, we normally run to see if they're wanted. And what we're seeing is that they'll might come up with an ICE, not deportation, but an ICE hit on them, and then they'll contact ICE. But it's not a, we're trying to victimize them at that, that's definitely not the case. It's our policy that everyone we come in contact with, domestic or anything, we run them to see if they have any warrants. So that's what, that's what we're seeing right now.
Well, and again, because I know there was a case where there was some concerns that ICE was contacted relatively recently. I, I just want to make really clear that agency policy is not to engage ICE. I mean, we've reiterated time and time again that we're a welcoming city. The mayor, the city council, through resolution, the mayor through, multiple mayors have said that that is not agency policy. I know that Commissioner Tuggle has publicly committed to that. So I just want to make really, really, really clear, because this is something that I say every time I do a cop walk in any of my neighborhoods, is that we are a welcoming city, that our police are not in the business of in any way putting folks in a situation where ICE would get involved. Because to your very point, there's already a lot of mistrust. And if we're going to catch the people that are perpetrating these crimes, we need people to not be afraid that when they call 911, they could face deportation, or they could face some sort of other recrimination.
Absolutely, and, and that is our push, and that's going to continue to be our push, to, to let the citizens know that we are not here to, to run them in the way that's going to affect anything with their status of being here, because we want them here at, at the end of the day. I will continue to go into roll calls and talk to the troops as well. I'll continue to stress to my majors and captains as well, hey, you know, ensure that we're not running it for ICE type of situations. I think, I think your point is, is very, very valid. Because again, we cannot solve crimes without people helping us. And, and we have to forge that, that, that bond between the police and citizens. Without it, we're not going to be successful. So yeah, to your point, you're absolutely right.
And then finally, just the point about needing to see officers out of the cars. I mean, we reiterate it every single time, but I still don't see enough of it.
Right. So what we're seeing is, we always get caught at the wrong moment, every time. It's that, it's that break that, that we're trying to get. And a lot of officers, what, what we're seeing is, we're taking that break, and we broke a little too long. We broke a little too long. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that it has not happened, because it has. That's where we have to hold our supervisors accountable. We have to get our supervisors to understand the importance of seeing that officer each and every day outside of the car, and what it does for the community. And when I go and I talk to the roll calls and the shifts, and when I talk to them on the street, we always talk about, what are we doing? Why are we here? And what the uniform means standing outside the car as opposed to inside the car. So yes, I, I agree, it's a hard push, but we're going to continue to fight on our end. And one thing that I always stress to our officers today is, make one person smile. Just one person. But you have to be out the car to actually make them smile. And they actually take that, and they're like, wow, okay. I've gotten phone calls where they say, sir, I made one person smile today. Not saying that they didn't make a million others, but it was just the, the, the fact that they listening, and they're actually doing exactly what we want them to do. But like I said, we have to be, we have to hold our supervisors accountable. And that's going to be, continue to be our push.
I truly hope that you will. And again, you know, this is, we have a strong major in Southeast who's working very hard, but it can't always be the wrong time. I mean, come on, it just, there's too much of it. So again, culturally, I just want to stress that the expectation all the way through has to be out of the car, proactively engaging.
Absolutely. And, and again, you're going to see it on the midnight shift, because we have them out the car putting our pamphlets on cars. So that's our start right there, but it has to be a trickling effect as well, where everyone understands that this is the purpose and what the purpose is. So absolutely, sir, and I will keep, continue to push on that.
Councilwoman Snead?
Thank you. So I'd, since Southeast and East are working together and having a, they have a plan, and I'm sure you can't say it now. Can I meet with someone in reference to hear what this plan is and how perfect? So who do I contact to make-
It would be actually Major Brown and Major Wells. They come up the plan together. And the plan has been implemented, like I said, to push their, the MSI squad, which was originally in the VRI zone of Eastern Two, but it's been pushed over to Fayette Street, Fayette and Rose, that area right there.
Okay. And then the, when you talk about on Monument Street, I think they have actually two patrol cars that are there on Rose and Monument, and then Port and Monument. Are those officers supposed to be out the cars as well over there, or is that, okay?
They're, they're actually really supposed to be out the car as well. What we're, not trying, but what we're telling the officers to do is park your car on one corner and kind of walk on the other corner. So it looks like you're in two places at one time.
And my second question is, you talked about roll call. Does roll call look the same at every precinct?
Yes. Well, it's supposed to, yes. So it's going to happen before the shift, of course, where they go in and they talk about the, the task for the day and give out warrants and things of that nature, so yes.
Is, if you drop in on a roll call and it's not probably what it's supposed to be, who checks that? Who, who, who's that person?
That's checked, it's, it's checked by the major and captain of the district, where they pop into roll calls, which they should be, which I did, and I know all my counterparts did as well. We pop in and, and we conduct a roll call inspections and, and things of that nature. So the captain, and again, I go to all my districts as well, so I'll do an inspection as well, so.
So there is a paper trail literally of, hey, I checked it at roll call and this was?
No, no, it's, it's not going to be a, a paper trial, a paper trail in the sense of, you know, physical paper. But we task our district commanders, who we feel strongly in, to ensure that roll, roll calls are being conducted and conducted properly.
Okay. And when officers are at roll call and it's realized that they don't know the community associations and the communities that they're patrolling, and what happens?
So that hasn't come up, where they haven't known any of the community or the associations. What we are going back to is post-officers. So you'll have the same post officer at, in, in each community, each and every shift. Unless they're off, of course, it'd be supplemented with, with a different. But for five days a week, you'll have the same exact post officer there each and every day. I think we lost a little about, a little bit about what you're talking about when we went away from the post officers. But this new schedule has put that back in.
Got it. So, and I don't know, I'm just asking, I'm an officer, I may be new to whatever Southeast Precinct. Is this someone that goes over the communities that are in this Southeast District? Or is it, here's the streets and figure it out?
Right. No, no. So the officers now, they actually work with, when they come into field training, they actually work with a seasoned officer that has been in that district. And they're, and being with them, they'll begin to see what communities and what streets that, that they are. So that's how we're combating that problem.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Stay right there, Colonel. Eastern District is up next.
Yes. Eastern District. Eastern District, currently we have five homicides against four of last year. We had nine, non-fatal shootings against two last year. We are currently down eleven percent in our robberies. And total Part One crime, we are down one percent in the Eastern District.
So I'll start right there. So non-fatal shootings are up three hundred and fifty percent, and homicides are up twenty-five percent in the Eastern. Can we talk about, because that's one of the hottest areas in the city, if not the hottest area in the city, can we talk about what kind of resources and plans we put in place to deploy in, in that area?
Yes. So the Eastern District, of course, we know we have two VRI zones. One's in the Darley Park area and one in that Monument Street.
And, and, sorry to interrupt, but also, can you tell me if, how many of the, the nine shootings were in VRI zones versus outside of them?
Yes. Give me one second.
Yes, sir.
So in Eastern, Eastern One, we had zero homicides in our VRI zone, zero shootings. We had, in Eastern Two, we had zero homicides and one shooting. And that's twenty-eight day.
So all of the, the incidents have happened outside of the VRI zone?
Yes. Basically outside of our VRI zone. And as you know, our VRI zones are, they have NCOs. We have placed all of our DAT squads in, into those areas, but what we're seeing is the buffer areas that we're getting hit at. So they're seeing our deployment inside of our actual zones, and they're bouncing outside of our zones.
Let me, sorry, let me interrupt for a second there, and this, you, you haven't been here for this, so this isn't for you. But I know that my colleagues and I have been consistently asking about the buffer areas, but also more importantly, about following the people. So we know that these individuals aren't dumb, right? If I'm someone who makes my money being, you know, a violent criminal in a VRI zone, and I know that you guys are going to come there and be there every day, all day, if I am anywhere any good at my job, what am I going to do? I'm going to move, right? But what we're not seeing is, are we targeting those people when they go outside of VRI? Because what we hear consistently is VRI, protect the zone, protect the zone, protect the zone, which we all think is great. We know that violence typically happens in Baltimore in the same places. But we, we also know is that violence in Baltimore happens with the same people. And if those people are moving, we have to target those people. And not everyone in those communities, but we also have to protect those neighborhoods that are on these buffer zones and are seeing this increase. Tell me what the plan is and the resources that we're, you're putting in place to deal with this stuff in the Eastern District, but talk about how we're going to deal with those- But talk about how we're going to deal with those buffer zones and following those people.
So what what we're trying to do is, we're trying to, I guess corral would be the right message. Corral them to an area so we can watch them. What with, in in the eastern, unlike the northeast, northeast has a lot of call up shots. The eastern has a lot of street narcotics, if 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 you may. So what we're doing to target is using a lot of the cameras, because we have a lot of cameras in the eastern district. So we're using a lot of cameras to to take a lot of these guys off with when we see the deal that is made. So normally our DAT squad, what they'll do is they'll be inside the buffer zone along with the, I'm sorry, they're inside the VRI zone along with patrol and they're patrolling. And once we begin to see the product move, that's when they'll go attack the cameras. And they'll look at the cameras because these guys don't realize that the camera is right there for some reason. So we're, at that point, we'll begin to watch the cameras. And we have made significant, significant arrests with with uses of the cameras. When we're not watching the actual camera, we have city watch actually watch the cameras as well. And what they'll do is call it out and then we'll go in and make the arrests. So what we're trying to do in the eastern is, we're trying to target an actual group. An actual group of individuals that we know operate together. This is a little higher end narcotic investigation, which a lot of times Colonel Conway Shop will help us with that. Just recently, they were able to take off a pretty good, a pretty good group over there. And now their group is ready to move to another area. We have some very, very strategic ways that we're trying to attack the the area. So like in the southeast district, we placed the big, on McGalgie Street, we placed that, what's that? So they think it's cameras and stuff, it is cameras on it, for everybody's listeners, it's cameras on top of it. So what we did is, we actually moved them to the area that we want them to be in.
Right.
And that's when we actually go in and use the the other cameras and so on and so forth to actually attack that group. So that's what we're doing a lot of it.
I just want to, I just want to add to Councilman that a lot of times when we when we get into chasing people, we're chasing crime. So a lot of times we look at things from a geography standpoint. And 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 you'd be surprised that when you look at just, if we try to chase all crime, we we're really not doing anything. And I think that's what we've we've tried in the past. I think now we're kind of focused on certain areas and the people within the area. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, you know, that's exactly what I want. I want us to focus on those areas but not forget those people. I think that, you know, for me, it's about targeted, targeted enforcement, as the Colonel was just saying. It's group, it's group violence. We know that most of the violence in the city is committed by small groups of people versus another group, a small group of people. And I think that we have to get back to targeting those groups, no matter where they are, but we know that they're going to operate in specific areas. Follow up question for you Colonel, and I wish Major Hood was here. So you talked about the city watch cameras and how many of them in the eastern, for example, we could talk about citywide because I think this is something that the council could help with during the budget time. So if it was up to me, we would have some live body person trained watching every one of them 24/7/365. How many of them are being watched consistently in the eastern? And who's watching them? Are we having to, we doing it with light duty people or are we training people like we used to do when?
Right, so we do have our light duty, well, no, well, they actually, most of them are retired or have been separated from the agency for medical reasons. Who who could have held a MPCC but don't. They're watching the cameras now. It's so many cameras that they can't watch all of them at 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 one time, but we tackle it both ways. We tackle it with officers in the district, we watch from the district and the city watch itself. So that's how we're we're actually watching it. I don't know how many operators they actually have, but I know every day our DAT squad is watching the cameras for the times that they're on, working.
Colonel, do?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that the SDSCs also look at the cameras as well as the Watt Center. So we had, we we're looking at it, for instance, today, Councilman Pinkett had reached out about a specific block that he was looking at off of North Avenue. And we just most recently got a drug arrest because they were viewing the camera and then radioed to the central district and they affected their arrest. So it's a lot of other people other than the the staff that's there. Also, I talked to Sam Hood, because it now falls under me, under Tanya Lewis. So we we are looking at down the road, maybe possibly putting them with communications because I think it would be more seamless if they were sitting with communications and they could actually look at the camera immediately. So we're trying to do that as well.
And thank you, and Chief Gillis, if we can have that, a follow up, a breakdown of city watch, how many cameras we have total, which I, we have the number, but more importantly, how many individuals we have staffed to watch those cameras and the amount of hours in the shifts that they are watching them? So that we can better see how the council can assist in making sure that we, I've run that operation efficient, efficiently as possible. Councilwoman Snead. It's eastern.
Yeah. I don't, no, I don't have any, go ahead.
All right, great. So you're not off the hook yet Colonel. So something else very, really quickly about the eastern for me that I'm, that I'm interested in. We see a small bump in Loshenee. Do we know what that is? Loshenee from Ottawa is up again, this is the same thing as the southeast, same?
Yes, absolutely, and but what we're what we're seeing is that we're seeing around that Hopkins area. And of course, you know, we deployed officers to that area as well. We have foot officers in the Hopkins footprint now.
Thank you, northeast.
Yes, northeast, so northeast is three homicides against two. We have three, I'm sorry, yes, three homicides in 2019 against two 2018. We have three non fatal shootings against eight last year. Currently, we have 41% reduction in robberies. And overall, we are down 29% in the northeast district. Northeast district is doing very, very well.
I'm going to surprise everybody and say that I have no questions about the northeast district. As you know, this is the district in which I live in. Major Major Preston does a great job and we're seeing great improvements there. They're doing a great job, so thank you.
Thank you.
On to the northern district.
You want me to read off the violence?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm sorry. So reference to the northern district, 2019 versus 2018. There were in 2019, two homicides in the the northern district, two homicides in 2018. With static in reference to percentages. Non fatal shootings were at five and five for both years, static as well. For the robberies within the northern district, you're looking at 46 incidents in 2019 versus 60 in 2018, a reduction of 23%. In reference to burglaries in the northern district, you're looking at 39 incidents versus 99 in 2018 for a reduction of 61%. Total violence year to date for the northern district, 76 incidents in 2019 versus 97 in 2018 for a reduction of 22%. Total property crime, 280, 228 in 19 versus 295 in 2018 for a reduction of 23%. And for part one crime, 304 in 2019 versus 392 in 2018 for a reduction of 22%.
Thank you Colonel, I think that that Major Gibson and his team have been doing a pretty decent job with the violence in the northern. But I do want to point out something and ask two questions. One, around the last seven days for street robberies, we've seen a big jump, 250% seven versus two. And 71% robberies overall. Can we talk about that? Is it any of the the trends or what's happening with the robberies in in the northern district?
So yes, there are some several patterns that were going on in in the northern district. I'll let the Colonel explain more in reference to those, but one of the most recent patterns that we were experiencing was an individual along the Charles Village area. This individual was responsible for at least five or six incidents involving an edged weapon. I am happy to report that as of yesterday, after committing one of those incidents, the district was able to arrest him. And he is probably the person of interest in those several other incidents, I won't speak on that. But knock on wood, we will probably be doing a lot of clearing with with that one incident with that individual. So I know that Major Gibson is working hard in reference to dealing with those issues as far as the borders and as far as the robberies, that is a major concern. Not only, not along, not alone in that Charles Village area, but also that York Road corridor. He has had historically some incidents along Greenmount Avenue to the east. And I know he has deployed very significantly, significantly in those areas to address those as far as those border areas that we've always been concerned with, where we border the central district along that North Avenue corridor and then where we border the northwestern district along Pimlico Avenue, Pimlico Road. It's one of those big things that we're focusing on that not only the the patch is is non denomination or no jurisdiction. So we make sure that all of these bordering commanders get together constantly and always redevelop these plans to address their issues. The biggest focus is identifying their crime patterns as early as possible. What we dictate to these commanders to do is, on a 24 hour period, a three, seven, 14, 28 day, identify what your crime patterns are, you know, what your victimology is, what your suspectology. Make sure that you're focusing and getting that out, information out to the troops and it has been having some success that we're with right now.
Thank you, Colonel, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to add, I mean, he did pretty much everything that I would said, other than, you know, talking about specifically. So we have a a pattern right now, an emerging pattern, not only the one that he he mentioned earlier, but we have an army jacket commercial robbery pattern that's kind of jumping out at us where an individual hit all in one day, that was on 131. He actually went inside the establishment, displayed a handgun and robbed them of their currency. So he's wearing this army jacket and it happened all on a Thursday. So we're looking at those cases as well that kind of drove some of the the robbery numbers. We also have a, pass the note, there was another commercial robbery that hit the majority of all districts, western district, northern district, northwest, central and in the northern. So we're looking at all these, what I'm trying to do is get the the citywide robbery unit to put out these pattern cases. So once they they look at a pattern, they they, what I want them to do is put that information out as soon as possible. Instead of waiting to investigate, I want them to be a little bit proactive with letting these gentlemen know that we have a pattern so they can adjust deployment right then and there, instead of looking at it 24 hours later because that doesn't mean anything, that doesn't do anything for me. The other thing that we want to do is is utilize our LPR system a little bit more so that we can adjust deployment as well.
And thank you, thank you for that Colonel, just a follow up, stay right there. I was going to go there about getting the information out in a timely fashion. I think it's great that you're proactive about that. And about LPR, because you know, I think we don't have enough of them and I know that we have MSP right now, actually, they're in the northeast right now. How many LPR units do we have per district?
I think it's 10 in the eastern, 10 in the western, yeah, 10 in the eastern.
10 in each district, okay.
I have some stationary, so I'm gonna let Drew Vought.
Yep, and then the, come on Director. And the follow up to that is, how many officers at each district are trained that that we use? Because what I, what I envision, what I think that will be great for the commanders at the district level is that each of them on every shift can have officers dedicated just to traffic. Because if we know inconsistently, we're, the Colonel's great about getting the information out to us to help us get it to our constituents about robbery patterns and vehicles and stolen vehicles that they're looking for and those kind of things. But if we know that these robberies are happening with stolen vehicles, if we were utilizing or had more LPR units to to utilize, then we will be able to close these cases in a much more, in a much quicker fashion and also in a more efficient fashion. So can you talk about where we are with LPRs and how many? Because what I don't, what we don't see is traffic really being done and using it because I think that a lot that has to do with, is a resource issue, but I also want to make sure that it's not a a physical technology or training issue as well.
Right, so just to, I guess, begin, we have 10 LPRs in the western, 10 in the eastern right now, specifically the mobile units. As far as the the number of fixed units, I'll have to get back to you on the specific number.
What about the rest of the districts?
I'm sorry, so those are the only two districts that we have specifically within sector patrol cars. We do have other LP, mobile LPR units though, within our RAT unit. Unfortunately though, those feeds do not go, while we do get hits on those feeds, the data goes to MCAC into Baltimore County.
Right, because it's a regional task.
Right, yes, yeah, so.
So not every district has LPR units that they can deploy at any given time.
So so we also, he's right, those those hits go out to Baltimore County, but we do have our own server now. So the MMU, they have them as well. The one thing I think that we that we need to do is, we have to make sure that we are utilizing them correctly because I think that's the next step. The the officers being trained is fine, but I think when they get hits, we have to know, they have to know what to do with the next step is.
Yes, sir.
So so I I think, in in my personal opinion, I think we're under utilizing them to be completely transparent and I think we we got to work on that. So so we're going to push forward to work on that. I also think that our robbery initiatives need to have them at all times, so we're working on that as we speak.
Yeah, I think that that speaks volumes to me because I think that will help. We know, if we have the technology, we have to use it. If we know that they stolen cars are out there committing a crime, we just have to put things in a place to make that happen. We see what happens when MSP is out there doing traffic and they're getting these hits and they're getting guns out of car. We can be doing a a lot better. Yes, sir, Director.
I I was gonna say too, and as well, as as far as looking outward and in ways we can expand our LPR system, we're looking at the potential, even looking at all of the ingress egresses for the emergency rooms within the Baltimore city. I think that that is a significant gap for us to pick up vital information, especially as it relates to when we have those walk in, those individual walk in. So that is another area that we are very actively looking to expand right now. And we are going through all of the the processes right now to to gather all the information as it relates to infrastructure needs and and corresponding costs to get that going.
Councilman Castello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have access to stationary LPR that are like installed on a, on a pole or something like that?
Yeah, so for the one, specifically like for the emergency rooms, that those would be stationary LPRs. We have a handful in the city as well currently. We have someone near the casino, one, I believe it, I don't know.
Yeah, no locations.
But the, as far as the stationary though, I I believe we did receive a grant from the GCCP as well. The government, the government's Office of Crime Control and Prevention, so.
Um, do we, do we have the capacity for installation of additional stationary LPR?
What do you mean when you say capacity?
Or the funding, do we have dollars? Yeah, or do we have extra stationary LPR that are not currently deployed and in use?
So I think that that's a relative question depending on where we would want to put them and then the corresponding infrastructure that would go. Kind of very similar to city watch cameras where if we're putting stationary LPRs in certain geographies or cameras in certain geographies, we got to look at all of the requisite infrastructure like the conduit and fiber and all that.
Got it, let me ask you a question a different way. Do we have any stationary LPRs that are sitting in a box that have not been assigned a deployment or?
Not that I'm aware of.
I figured.
I was gonna say, if that was the case, then yeah, no.
Do we know if there's, there's going to be an influx, and any influx is probably the the wrong word. Do you know if in the near future, i.e. the next, this calendar year, if there will be an opportunity for installation of additional stationary LPR?
Within the calendar year?
Yeah.
My hope is that that answer is yes, we're looking into it very actively. More on that and we can talk offline about it.
Yeah, like to talk privately, I have a couple, two or three locations in mind, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't really have a concern, but I what I wanted to do, I wanted to commend Major Gibson. A lot of times when you all get it right, you you never hear it. So I wanted to take opportunity to say that him and his team got it right. About almost a month ago, we had an incident with some students and some other individuals in the Hamden community. And that in and of itself was bad enough, but it could have gotten worse. But just the the way that he and his team intervened, because they they know the community, they they were able to intervene in a way that they couldn't have if he, if, you know, they weren't really community oriented. And I think that as a result, they took a situation that could have just been exponentially worse. And and now trying to turn it to a situation where the community can really deal with some issues that haven't been dealt with for a long time. So just wanted to commend you all, the the entire department and Major Gibson and his team for for getting it right.
Thank you, sir, he is a, he is a great asset to us and we realize that his relationship with the community is stellar. Um we joke him sometime about his relationship with the community and how engaged he is, but but he is taking the um, taking the lead on that and has shown and paid dividends. Sir, in reference to the LPR, the follow-up for that, so what we're not where we want to be and we realize that the importance of LPR and what it can do. What we have done in the Patrol Bureau and some of the uh district commanders and shift commanders have taken the lead is as soon as they realize that a vehicle is stolen in the area. Or of the victim of a carjacking or suspicious vehicle that we we may get a person of um, a vehicle of interest in reference to something. That information is quickly being given to our communications center and then every fifteen to twenty minutes, that information is being pushed out. So it's gonna be this description of this vehicle here in this area. So now all nine districts and all officers who are working are now looking for that vehicle. What we're kicking around and we're in the early stages of it now is using our VRI partners to be a eyes force as well. So getting on our networks with VRI, so now we're getting DPW, DOT, the same information that, hey, I see that vehicle here. They can get it to us, of course, not through our communications, but it's more eyes on the street that we're using.
Thank you, and if you can get DPW to 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 work, I think that's a a miracle.
I didn't even mean to open that door, sir. I apologize.
Uh we'll go to the northwest district now.
Yes, sir. So for the northwest district for two thousand nineteen, we're looking at um two homicides in two thousand nineteen as well as two thousand eighteen. Uh it is steady uh as far as uh crime and for the homicides. We have uh five non-fatal shootings in two thousand nineteen versus six in two thousand seventeen, a reduction of seventeen percent. For robberies for the district, you know, thirty-eight robberies in two thousand nineteen versus seventy-one in two thousand eighteen, uh for a reduction of forty-six incidents. Uh burglaries, we have forty-five burglaries in two thousand nineteen versus sixty-four in two thousand eighteen for a reduction of thirty incidents. Total violent crime for the northwest district, eighty-one incidents as compared to one-on-one in two thousand eighteen for a reduction of twenty-six percent. Total property crime for the nor- uh for the northwest in two thousand nineteen was two oh six versus two thirty for two um, two thousand eighteen for a reduction of ten percent. Total part one crime for the uh northwestern district was two hundred and eighty-seven incidents versus three hundred and thirty-one for a total reduction of fifteen percent for part one crimes.
Thank you, and before I go to my my colleague Councilman Pinkett, uh I want to talk about one particular thing. And that would be aggravated assaults, so in the twenty-eight day, there's a thirty-seven percent bump and just a twenty-eight percent bump in the year-to-date. Can you talk about those? Because I see that, you know, while we're down in non-fatal shootings, the ag assaults still are significantly up.
Yes, so that is a concern of us and that is what we call a precursor. So that is something that we're definitely getting out to the district commanders of this is something that we need to look into because it is a precursor for possibly a non-fatal shooting or homicide. So what we have seen though is the correlation also between um domestic violence and these aggravated assaults. If you will look down into um the domestic violence for aggravated assaults, it is up, not not a large amount. But it is up um ten incidents in the twenty-eight day versus versus seven uh for an increase of forty-three percent. So while that plays a part in it all the time, um not all the time, you're also worrying in reference to where these aggravated assaults occur in reference to some of the nightlife that may be around the northwestern district. But we realize that these are, these indicator crimes could also lead to other things. So it is definitely something that we're pushing to the district commanders to definitely keep an eye on as far as where they occurring at. Um historically for the northwestern district, it looks like they have a small cluster of aggravated assaults around six twenty-four posts. So that's something that the major is definitely aware of.
Thank you, and last question, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this one. So lost any from autos up, same trend, but are we employing some of the same tactics that Colonel Hatchet is doing over on the east side?
It is definitely some of the same tactics. We're getting out the message to the community in reference to what's going on about leaving. I know it's hard, I'm 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 uh guilty of it myself. We try to push to the community that, look, we need you to leave your car in the same state that you bought your car. I know it's hard not to put something in that backseat and leave it there, but it really has to be um an empty vehicle. Because the individual who is looking to be um, get his come up um may think it it it's something in that gym bag when it's nothing but sweaty socks. He may think it's an MP three player or whatever it is, so we're trying to really push that down to individuals, getting out those placards on the vehicle of, look, you left something in your car knocking on the door. Uh one thing that we're also looking at, not only in in the northwest, but in the central district who has historically had some problems with lost anything from autos. Because of the transitory nature of the entertainment district is getting those placards out to those businesses. So when someone is going to a restroom, they may see that placard as a reminder of, hey, look, this is something that we need to do. But it's something that we're really pushing out in all of our community uh meetings that, look, you have to leave your vehicle as empty as possible so you don't become victimized, but yes, sir, we are.
Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to mention, I know Major Brick, Major Brickus and her team are are on it, but just wanted to keep on the radar. The um uh Duke Lynn where uh the three schools are um Bard School, Connections, Angela Davis, Quins Falls Elementary School. Um I know there've been some incidents over the over the past couple months um as it relates to um maybe some assaults, some robberies related to to the youth. And just making certain that it stays on the radar. Um I know that we've had a, we had a meeting there maybe about a month ago. And so everyone from school police to northwestern were there, so everyone's on the same page, but just making certain we keep attention on that.
I would definitely uh reiterate that to that team and I would just say, you know, what a great job that she has been doing in that northwestern district. And now with the um, with the coupling of her with now Captain Lafler, I think it's gonna be an excellent team and I expect big things from the northwest with that team together.
And thank you, I know it's it's, the the gentlemen have a a lot of pressure. The ladies that are running districts are doing so well, they're putting a lot of pressure on the gentleman, a lot of pressure on the gentleman.
I I don't think it's pressure, sir. I think I think it's uh competition and and I like a little competition.
Yes, competition is good for everybody, sir. Spoken like a true Mustang.
Yes, sir.
Uh Councilman Burnett.
I don't have anything for northwest, I wait till southwest.
Yes, sir. Western district.
Good evening, Lieutenant Colonel Jackson, Area Three, Western, Southwest, Southern. Uh in terms of homicide, uh we're looking at in two thousand nineteen, three versus uh four in eighteen. Non-fatal shootings, seven versus seven in eighteen, so we're even. Uh robbery, year-to-date, we're we're looking at uh forty-five incidents versus twenty-eight. In two thousand uh eighteen, which puts us up about sixty-one percent. Total, total uh violent crime. Uh we're up eighty-eight versus seventy-nine last year. Total property com, uh one. One forty versus one fifty-nine last year, down twelve percent and total part one crime, two. Twenty-eight versus two thirty-eight uh last year, down four.
Thank you, Colonel, and I'll I'll start uh very quickly before, one one category before going to my colleagues. Uh start with street robberies and robberies, so in the twenty-eight day, there's a seventy-seven percent increase in street robberies, twenty-three versus thirteen. I mean, just what we're seeing there is this, because we've seen this big, big spike in juvenile robberies across the city. It's just along the lines with that, but also is there particular areas that my colleague can get information out to their citizens and and what we're seeing?
Yeah, we had a a a a pattern, a small pattern that we had up in that uh four cases. Uh the west side of uh Perse National Case, had six cases in the western, up in that uh Bentlow at Winchester area. Um it, we haven't had a case since one twenty-two with the uh with the, we had developed a suspect in that case. That suspect, possible suspect got shot on Lafayette uh on that, on a couple days, yeah, on that date. And we haven't had a robbery since in that area, so I think that pattern has thus subsided. We did have a uh, we had some hacking incidents on Bradish Avenue where people will be, individuals were hacking from the southwest. Catching hacks from the southwest, those hacks were then getting robbed uh in the in that Bradish area area. We had something similar to that last year. Uh around this time last year, year, a year and a half ago, so uh what 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 I did was had the southwest. And uh western start working on their borders, identifying, it's hard sometimes to identify who's hacking, but 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 trying to the the the. Put a uh, put some attention on these individuals that are hacking and and those that are trying to catch hacks. Uh because those persons, of course, were some were some suspects, could be suspects. Yeah, three, yeah.
Thank you, and Colonel, we might, we, and I say this, it's a joke, but it's also serious. If we can talk to those people about, you know, maybe moving over to Uber or Lyft so they can be a lot more safer in 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 their ride-sharing abilities. I think that, you know, there's some old man in northwest Baltimore sitting around somewhere thinking about how much money he could have made back in the day. When he just had a simple ad in the telephone book that said he was a hack, which was the original Uber. But I think that if there's still individuals out there doing that, we can try to as much as possible push people to that so they can be safer and still earn a living.
Yes, sir. So those those patterns kind of drove up, drove our numbers up. We also had that, uh that I think the Colonel talked about, that pass the note pattern. Um we had two at Mount Domin and one in the McDonald's on Franklin Street, so that kind of pushed our numbers up in the western in terms of robberies.
Thank you. Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm I'm just gonna focus on one, one area, um Bryant between Monroe and Ricestown Road.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
We 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 gotta get that, get that under control. Um I I think there was supposed to be cameras installed in that area. I'm I'm not certain if um, I was told that they um, they they should have been installed by now. Does does anybody know about the the um CCTV cameras along Ricestown Road?
I also want to add.
Colonel, the microphone, they're still recording.
So you brought up Bryant, I just want to let you know that we have some good news on on Bryant. I don't really want to talk about it specifically right now, but I can tell you that it was activity on Bryant today that that yielded some handgun violations, so just want to give you that information.
Director, yeah, to come to the podium, no, none of the mics on except for the podium, sorry. We'll get your Fitbit steps in today.
If they are not up currently, they should be up very soon, uh by the end of the month, I'm hoping. I will get confirmation and let you know uh no later than tomorrow morning, but they should, if those cameras are not up currently, they should be up very soon.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we need all of the resources we can possibly get to 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 help, you know, our officers do what they need to do. And so um the, I think those cameras, especially in that area, will be critical. We we need more, but I mean, I'm gonna take what I can get.
I agree, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. On to the southwest district.
Southwestern. Uh in terms of homicide, we're at uh five in two thousand nineteen versus four in two thousand eighteen, up twenty-five percent. Uh non-fatal shootings, eight thus far in two thousand nineteen versus three, which brings us up significantly, one sixty-seven. Robbery, thirty-eight versus forty, we're down slightly in robbery. Uh aggravated assault, sixty-one versus forty-two, up. Burglary, seventy, seventy-three uh uh last year versus forty-five this year. We're currently down thirty-eight percent in in burglary. A total part one crime. Total part one crime down uh. Two, two on, two forty-eight. Uh in two thousand eighteen, two oh nine, this thus far this year. Total part one crime, we're also down three sixteen versus three forty-one.
Thank you. Colonel.
No, I got it. No, we just, I guess, I guess he's trying to remind me that we just took a robbery arrest in the west side shopping center. A person hit, tried to rob a woman at the ATM in the west side shopping center, that that those two suspects also robbed someone in the southern. So uh it speaks really to the level of communication that that.
Yes, sir.
Districts are having. As soon as that robbery occurred in the southern, we put that, had that information put out and our patrol were a, were able to get the suspects. Doesn't always happen, but that's a good example of us trying uh uh in terms of communicating with each other, trying to get that information. Timely intelligence is really the key in terms of uh how we uh are able to apprehend suspects and get this information out, not only to uh our officers, but to the to the community.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um just, you know, it seems like the the violence uh in the southwest has sort of continued from the summertime. Um without going into any specifics, can you talk about what may be happening? I know a lot of these have been concentrated in Edmonton Avenue and Frederick Avenue corridor. Um I know a few are domestic, but uh one, a few, I know one or two, I I talk to the district commander regularly. Um and so he's giving me some insight, but if you can speak to, you know, some of, i- i- is this related to what we saw last summer? Uh and if so, what's being done to to address uh that that uptick?
So in terms of the shootings, um eight shootings, we had three closed with arrest and one has an open warrant. We were taking incidents in the southwest where we wouldn't normally uh take hits. That 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 top end of Emerson Avenue, we took about uh, I guess going into uh last year into this year, we took about four incidents before we were able to get that under control. Um none of which were, we found were related. Um uh the last one, we were actually able to get a suspect on that case, we were uh, deployment was tight, a suspect was possibly running from that, was running from the last incident. We were able to apprehend him in in a quick fashion. Um the shooting down on Harmon Avenue was a was a a a fight after uh over the uh, after a fight party. Uh suspect and victim knew each other. We had that Dennison Street, which was uh, we had a uh, which is a guy down there uh. That was from the area but didn't reside down there trying to sell some 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 drugs in the area where where he was told not to be. Um uh Colonel Conway's guys got a warrant for that suspect. Uh we had done a lot of work in that Lexington Monastery and in that NFL, Normandy Franklin Loudon. I actually believe that's what pushed some of that violence up to that Emerson Village, because some of those guys that hang in that that bottom end. Uh when we put pressure down in one end, they they'll go all the way up to Emerson, that 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 uh, all the way up to Emerson Village. Look, we've talked about geography and how if we're now they're actually focused on individuals, at least try to focus on the geography where those individuals uh might go. They just got us, they just, they got us for four incidents before we were able to get 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 under control. So I'm confident in that major and that captain up there, um they were on it. The 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 two incidents up at uh, what, Beachfield, one of which was uh.
Yeah, there was one on Beachfield and one on Seminole.
Yeah, the double, that involved a a an argument with some domestic overtone, so a lot of these, a lot of southwest was taking some hits in areas where we wouldn't have taken them. And a lot of them were crimes, a lot of them shootings in- involved in uh, I would say more of a, an opportunity rather than a a displacement or or pattern. It is, in terms of the uh, I'm sorry, Councilman, did you ask me another question?
No, no, fuck, keep going.
In terms of the homicides, we did, we did take a couple uh. One, two. One, two, three, four, five, five, one, only one of which was in that that primary VRI zone, that was the two thousand block of Holland Street. Um that, Duke Lynn, we have an open warrant on that, that forty-nine hundred block of Frederick Avenue, I would not have um. And that's something, we 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 don't take a lot of homicide, a lot of violent crime up in there, up in that area, we got a lot of juvenile, some juvenile crime. Uh but we're we're able to get a suspect on that uh, an open, suspect and open warrant on that, that case up on that forty-nine hundred block of Frederick.
Um okay, I I just had a couple broad questions, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. Um one, I don't expect an answer today, but if we could get it for the next committee meeting next month. Um so we've made a lot of investments in technology in the last two years. And I'm just interested in what the outcomes have been uh for those investments. Uh so I wanted to see if we could get data on ShotSpotter hits. Um the, I know that there are two new strategic command centers, one being built out in the eastern and western, so I know that's sort of still up in the air. But sort of outcomes, what it, what has that been looking like um for those particular districts as it relates to crime reduction? Um the vehicle laptops, um again, just sort of a report back on what you're seeing as far as usage, utilization, time with reports, that kind of thing. The city watch expansion, I think that question was already asked about the expansion, I know that there's a partnership underway. Um my guess is hopefully by next month, you'll, we'll. My guess is hopefully by next month, you'll, we'll know what those expansion sites are. Does that make sense, Mr. Chair? Just those, those couple areas?
Yeah, that's fine.
If we, and the mobile command center as well. Just sort of, if we could just talk about tech at the next, I just, I had a lot of questions about it, especially after going to New Orleans. It seems that they have deployed similar strategies in their crime reduction plans. And I know we potentially have a new commissioner coming in from there. So just kind of want to get sort of a baseline of where we're at right now as far as how that technology has resulted in those, you know, what the outcomes of those investments have been.
So do you want that in writing, or do you want us to prepare to, to talk about that in the next go-around?
It's up to the chair, how he'd like to do it.
Well, it's your question, Councilman. I'm not a dictatorship.
I think adding it to the presentation would be helpful.
Yep, we just add it to the presentation for next month.
No problem, no problem.
Councilman, just for clarity purposes, as I'm gathering all the information, I just want to make sure I'm presenting and giving.
Some of this may be difficult to quantify, some may be easy. Number of hits to ShotSpotter.
Yeah, like for ShotSpotter specifically.
I think that's probably the easiest one. Time and location for, locations for the CityWatch expansion. And I think data associated with CityWatch would be helpful. How many arrests have been made from footage, where those arrests are occurring? I think all of that would just be helpful for me and my colleagues. I guess at this point, you'd have more anecdotal outcomes around the investments in vehicle technology and strategic command centers, but whatever you can sort of quantify there would be helpful.
Would it be, would it be helpful, like, for the SDSCs to kind of take a broad overlook about kind of the workflow and the processes that are associated with them?
Yeah, and that one particularly would be helpful for me. I got a lot of questions at a recent community meeting about the strategic command center specifically that I knew a little bit about, but wasn't able to really speak at length. So it would be just helpful from my knowledge. I know that it's not in my council-matic district, but the western is nearby.
You have anything in particular?
Around, well, one, so the primary question I got was around cost, but then there were a number of follow-up questions associated with the impact. There was questions about why, like, how the districts were selected to use that technology and what the potential for expansion into other districts was. But from my perspective, I did get the cost from the budget department. I did get that from the budget director the week after, so I do know what it costs. My next question around a price tag that, that significant is, you know, how is this working? Is it useful for commands that?
So I'll let the Lieutenant Colonel jump in, but what I'd like to do next week is maybe you could come over to the headquarters building. We could sit down and try to figure out exactly what you would like so that we can, we can get those things, those items to you. Yeah, or if you can send me an email, that'd be great.
Colonel, what we should do actually is also, tomorrow, we can get with Mr. Amerolz and myself from the council president's office, and we will try to schedule appearances for council members and groups who have not been to the strategic centers for them to go.
Yes, sir.
My last question, again, a data question. Do, do we track currently? We've talked a lot earlier about community engagement as it relates to gathering intel from the detectives, but I think overall, do we track? Do officers report every conversation that they have to you? Do they track that kind of thing? And again, this came out of the visit to New Orleans. I was able, I was presenting with a citywide map of every community engagement instance. I mean, it was pretty cool to see where officers are going, who are they talking to. Do we quantify that?
Great question. So me and Colonel Briscoe are actually kind of taking a very comprehensive approach to make sure that we're memorializing a lot of these community engagement efforts. We have a computer-aided dispatch code that shows community engagement, but that really kind of only captured a very small portion. Just like the location, who the officer was, and then the duration and the date. So we're looking at it from a more comprehensive level and breaking it down into types of community events, how long they were there, what was done, what would the population look like as far as demographics, socioeconomics, all of those. And I'll digress and let Colonel Briscoe talk about it since she's the subject matter expert on it, but that is an ongoing process and a priority for data capturing for 2019 for the agency.
Good evening. So we are looking at twofold, just as Director just indicated, not just the officer on the street doing a community engagement in terms of conversation, but we've looked at not just New Orleans, we looked at what Philly has done, in terms of data capture, LAPD has done, because there is the, more of a focus to understand problem-solving and how we're capturing that. So you're asking two questions in one, so yes and yes. The immediacy of how we're proactively community engaging, but more importantly, the outcomes from that. So we're looking at our, in pursuit, and we're working on changing some tabs to be able to identify exactly in terms of problem-solving and updating because it's more of a case management kind of a view of how we're engaging as well as are we getting out of the car and engaging on a proactive level from the line officer to the neighborhood coordinating officer. So dual roles, so yes and yes.
And the reason I'm asking, I've had a lot of conversation recently, and I don't want to go into weeds on this, but with the Edmonton Village Shopping Center in my district, one of the strategies deployed, and I know it's not just unique to that particular facility, is like having a notebook where officers are getting out, signing the book, talking to the staff at the store. It seems like that's something that, I think it's a good strategy, especially as you are seeing trends in commercial robberies. Maybe there's tips or information that can be gleaned from that. But also, like I said, when I was showing that map, I'm like, well, this would be pretty cool because if I can, if you guys can track, yes, they went to every single store on Frederick Avenue on this day at this time. Or talk to someone in the corner, talk to kids. I mean, the events are great, and I'm glad that you are quantifying that because that was something I was asking about a while ago. It's like, how do we track? And I like the data. I can see it, feel it. And I think as much as that, we can track those conversations when they happen, where they happen. I think, one, it's twofold. One, it's showing that we actually are, as a department, making strides and engaging the public and rebuilding that trust. But two, it's an accountability thing to, or Councilman Cohen stepped out, but to his point about officers sitting in cars and not engaging. I think if you have that quantifiable data points, we can use that as a metric to measure performance for officers.
So I can tell you, it's not germane just to the southwest district. I can tell you that we, all of our districts, well, I don't have a district anymore, but all the districts, when I have one, specifically in the western, we had twenty books, and they were strategically placed. It wasn't just to be at one, it was to kind of make sure that the officers were moving about locations in the community that we knew they needed to interface. And so I can surely tell you that most of, that all of the districts have a mechanism of that. So we're trying to take it from the paper so that we can draw the reports because that process undergirds what's expected from community-oriented policing, the strategy in and of itself. So we have to capture all of that. So we're working through the technology gaps now and how best to do that, to capture not just the signing of the book and speaking to the business owners, but the community meetings, just all of those different facets of community engagement, not just civic engagement where we're going to do an event. The actual community engagement as well.
Thank you. I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Last and not least, we will go to the southern district.
Yes, sir. Southern district. So for year-to-date. We have, in terms of homicide, we've had three incidents versus three this time last year, which breaks us even at zero. Non-fatal shootings, seven incidents in 2019 versus three in 2018. Robbery, sixty-five incidents versus fifty-seven in 2018, we're up 14 percent. Burglary, up two percent with sixty-three this year, having sixty-two in 2018. Total property crime, we had 246 incidents versus 221 in 2018, which is, brings us up 11 percent. And a 12 percent increase with 365 incidents in total part-one crime versus 327 in 2018.
Thank you. Go the Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we've had, I think we had about five incidents in Ridgely's Delight over the last 10 days or so. Do you have any updates on that?
Yeah, all of those incidents are still open. I can say that there's no, there's no identifiable link to those cases. We had the...
Without disclosing the citywide trend, do we know if any of the five of those match up with another trend citywide?
No. No, sir.
Okay. Then in Riverside, we've had a significant increase. We also had one in Otter Barn, but there seems to be a significant increase in armed robberies, youth with masks on their face. Can you get into that at all with respect to additional deployments that Major Brown has? And if you're noticing any trends, or if any of those are syncing up with any trends citywide? I know Colonel Conway, your folks made some very speedy arrests a couple Sundays ago, or actually, I think it was MLK Day in the morning. But I think the rest of those are open, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, so we have, we have about five patterns going on in the southern district. So right now, you have, you know, unfortunately, we had the shooting in the southeast, which led it to the gentleman being shot and killed. So he was a part of your, one of your commercial robbery patterns. We also had the juveniles downtown, and I think we talked about them a little earlier, where they hit in the southern district at 100 Burkehead and 1600 Elkins Lane for the street robberies. So it's a pattern along with the central district. Also, we had the carjacking arrests, which I think you're speaking of, where we had the individuals that were arrested in the, about to do a, we called it about to do a lick because it was a carjacking crew. We also looking at a similar carjacking pattern in street robbery cases at 1400 Henry Street, 600 South Bolden, Barney Street, and 800 South Rose Street. That's where a suspect is approaching victims, displays a handgun, and robs them of their property. It looks like two blackmail suspects, and they have a getaway driver, and they displayed a handgun in that one as well. And then, as you said, the Otter Barn surrounding area, street robbery pattern where we're looking at four in the southern district, 300 Penn, 200 Penn, two Toms, and then one at 900 Lemon Street. So we're looking at that as a pattern as well.
The main thing that I'm hearing in the community is the trend, it's, I don't think it's necessarily the volume of armed robberies, which is unacceptable, and I know I'm preaching to the choir. I think what's changed is the percentage of them that involve a firearm. And that's what's really scaring folks, understandably so. The other point of frustration, if I may, Lieutenant Colonel, is the, when we have juveniles involved in these and they're getting out. And Lieutenant, or Colonel Conway, we had a conversation a couple weeks ago, and I want you to know that the residents share the police department's frustration when juveniles are committing these crimes and getting out the next day and committing the same crime over. And I know that your folks are feeling worn down and beat up over it, and I just want to acknowledge that I appreciate that you guys are still engaged in the crime fight and that a lot of the residents that I represent feel the same way. They're very appreciative. And I'm sorry, Lieutenant Colonel.
No, we're arresting them. We'll say that they make a significant amount of robbery arrests in the south, in the southern in terms of these juveniles. Often, they're getting right back out and doing the same thing. But the goal is to remain focused and target those areas where we know they're going to continue to hit. On that Patapsco corridor, for example, we had, we've had several patterns. We noticed when we, we did some things to attack that, that, that commercial pattern, once we did that, the robberies then seeped into the communities behind. So we're constantly trying to jump ahead and focus on the next area where they're going to go based, once we hit, in terms of displacement. We continue to make an arrest. My point is, we're not gonna, we're still gonna remain focused. Officers know we'll get those, once the, once the pattern comes out, descriptions of these individuals, we ensure that we get those out as quickly as possible. Shift change is important in terms of commercial and these pattern robberies, street robberies in terms, because they will hit us in midst of shift change. So we ensure that we kind of cover those areas during shift change. And officer will stand by, officer two will stand by in those areas where we know we're having problems with robberies. He or she will get relieved on post. So it's definitely a challenge.
As I've shared with some of you, we have convened a group of community leaders. Several folks are very engaged, very capable. A number of them veteran law enforcement in other municipalities. As you referenced earlier, if we can have every district in the city have that type of response from the community, I certainly appreciate the nod to those community leaders and members in my district. And I want you to know that those folks stand ready and willing to assist the police department in any way humanly possible. So if there's things that you guys can think of that you need from the community, just a phone call away, and we'll get everyone activated and helping you out in any way possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a follow-up, and this is citywide related. So for the Colonel, I think that, for me, I just want you to know that I'm not big on a number of arrests, but who we're arresting and what we're arresting them for. So I want to talk about citywide arrests for three categories so far this year. So robberies, ag assaults, and gun arrests. So robberies, I see that we had 76 through this period last year, and we have 56 this year, which is down 20. But my question to you, Colonel, is, is that in these, in this 56, are we getting more bang for our buck than we got in the 76 last year? Are we clearing more cases at this point than we were last year for robberies?
So I think we're, we're seeing, we're seeing one specific case where they are using communication, their communication skills have changed over the, over the course of the last couple of years. What they're doing is they're, they're carjacking one car, going to a neighborhood, robbing a certain amount of people. It's being trailed by another car, and then what they're doing is jumping into another car. So I think what Lieutenant Colonel Robert Jackson explained was, I think that we are getting a little bit better by communication, but they're getting a little bit more advanced in the way they're doing it. We used to have robbery patterns where people would approach on foot. Now they're approaching on a car around a corner, stealing another one, and then we got another carjacking pattern. So the bang for our buck, I'm not going to put the cart before the horse, but I think, I think, you know, with the robbery numbers being down 14 percent, I think it's a true testament to what they're focused on, and it's focused on the robbery patterns. I think we're going to have a successful end of this week, so I'm looking forward to that. I know just, you know, recently Lieutenant Colonel Dion Hatch was, was patrolling, and information came out, and he was right behind a carjacking car, right then and there. So we ended up clearing a few cases because of that. So I think, I think patrol is really engaged as far as deployment, redeploying into these certain areas. I think where we can get better is monitoring social media. I think, you know, having more detectives assigned to those specific units like robbery and shootings. I think we can slow down the amount of pace of violence. So I think the 56 versus the 76, I think what we're seeing right now is a group of individuals that are, they have a full-time job with robbing these individuals. Not only that, they've found that it's lucrative to steal these cell phones, take these cell phones to different pawn shops, and these pawn shops are taking ownership of those phones and then distributing money to them. In fact, we have a couple that are around a quarter million dollars. So we're taking a close look at that as well.
I was going to say, we have that pawn shop law from a few years back that we did. I know that Mr. Smully and who, who worked with me here at the council president's office at the time to help craft that bill and let us know, let me know if we need to look at strengthening that or improving that to make sure. And Colonel, I want to thank you for, for what you're saying and for all your hard work and to point out this specifically for the citizens because... because around this, these patterns of robberies of cars that have been sitting on blocks, running idly, waiting for someone to, to come. If any city citizens watching this on YouTube or any other way, it's critically important. You, we know who belongs on our block. We know who belongs in our parking lot, you know, know, we, we know the cars that frequent our, our neighborhood. And we don't want people to be calling the police for any and every old thing, but we want people to protect themselves and to protect our neighbors. And you, as you know, uh, Colonel, we would be amazed at the amount of times that I just come home and someone just happens to be in front of my door, and they pick the wrong door, and they end up going to jail. But we need more and more citizens to make those calls and make sure that we are alerting people. And let the police, especially when the information is being put out by the, the majors and the captains on next door, the type of vehicles that they're looking for, and if you see vehicles idling, meeting those descriptions in front of your home to on your block, let the police know so that we can try to make you safer and make your, your citizens safer. And the last question for tonight, Colonel, is about a gun arrest. Gun arrests are down, uh, uh, thirty-three percent year-to-date. And just wanted to talk about that, because as you know, I believe that the guns and the flow of guns into the city of Baltimore is where the, the battle for violence lies. And then also, uh, something that you know is also important to me, as we move into, and I'll be asking the, the Commissioner Destiny when he gets there, as we move into the, the new year, about making more cases on gun trafficking coming into the city, because we know most of the guns that are used in crimes in the city of Baltimore are coming from about the city, but we have not, in, in my opinion, in the past, done enough to target those people. So can you talk about the gun arrests and, and why you think they're down, but also if we're, if we're getting more bang for the buck in, in those arrests as well?
So, so first of all, I want to say today was a good day. We had, uh, five, five handgun arrests.
That is a good day.
Today. Uh, not only that, my guys did a search and seizure warrant earlier this morning that netted about seven guns. So, uh, that's probably going to jump our numbers right back up. But, um, I do want to say that, um, you know, MMU, I don't know if Major Gilbert is still here, but, uh, MMU, um, they've been doing a heck of a job with, um, um, you know, effective car stops, um, working in areas where we need them to work. Um, I know that all the lieutenant colonels, um, can, can reach out to MMU and have them distributed to different areas where we have gun, gun crime. Um, I do want to say that we had a, a couple initiatives last year, uh, in the beginning of the year, that netted us a lot of, a lot of handguns. So we're pushing, um, to, uh, not only, um, the seven centuries with, um, the, the warrant apprehension task force and other state partners and federal partners, but we're pushing for that to, um, to, to go, I think, in, uh, May or June, um, depending upon what happens February fifteenth, of course. So, so we're looking to, uh, definitely make a push to, to have these initiatives that we had, um, in the beginning of the year last year. So, um, I think the gun numbers, uh, especially after today, are going to shoot up a little bit, but we are looking at it. I know myself and all the other, uh, lieutenant colonels were looking at it today, trying to figure out exactly why it's a little bit lower. Um, the only thing that we could, we could come up with was, was seven centuries and the initiatives that we ran in the very beginning of the year last year, where we had a little bit more resources. So we would definitely not veer from that.
Thank you. And lastly, what I'll say before we close is, amidst all the, the chaos at the top and everything that's been going on with the department over the last few months, I want to say, on behalf of myself and my colleagues, to thank all of you who have been here today for your hard work. While everything's been crazy at the top, you guys have kept your heads down and kept your heads in the crime fight. So thank you on behalf of us and the citizens. And with that being said, the committee is in recess until next month.
Yes, sir. Thank you.